Thank you, everybody, for attending today's council meeting. And following this meeting, there'll be a special meeting to discuss an ordinance. If you care to stick around for that, it deals with the Parks and Recreation Commission. At this time, I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules. By Mr. Lawrence. By Mr. Guines. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. For the clerk, that's a seven oh vote. Thank you. All right. If the clerk would read the revisions.
To the consent agenda, we're substituting item five and exhibit B only for resolution accepting certificate of substantial completion for final pay application for JE tally construction. And to the routine agenda, we're adding a docket of claims in the amount of $112,512.11.
Moving to amended agenda. It's a motion by Mr. Lawrence to approve the amended agendas. There, second.
Gines, a second again.
Mr. Guines, seconds out. Any discussion? All in favor? That's a seven oh vote for the clerk. All right. Thank you. That brings us to the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome, everybody, to this meeting of the city council and a workshop to follow, I believe, right?
Yep.
Do have part of my mayor's report to read, a proclamation to some very special people from Livingston County.
Livingston County Cares.
You are, right? If y'all want to come up. Hey, County, how are you? I'm good. Been friends of ours and friends of Biloxi and friends of the coast for many moons. And we do appreciate it. And it's a great pleasure for me to offer this proclamation on behalf of the city. Whereas Livingston County Cares was founded in 2005 as a collaboration between Sonny Jacococa Geneseo and the Livingston County, New York, community to aid Harrison County after Hurricane Katrina. Livingston County Cares is 100% volunteer organization dedicated to supporting communities in need through disaster relief and humanitarian projects locally, nationally, and globally. Whereas volunteers have participated in 97 service trips assisting communities across the U.S. and Puerto Rico with their efforts valued at over $2.4 million. In addition to rebuilding homes, they have supported Harrison County through projects like the Livingston County Coalition of Churches Tools for Katrina Project, the Walmart Youth Football League, Arc Connections to the Gulf Coast, the Walmart Youth Recreation Complex Project, the Moore Community House, Back Bay Mission, and the Katrina Memorial Park. Take a breath. Whereas even after, as Katrina memories fade, Livingston County Cares remains committed to serving Harrison County and beyond. In their 41st mission to Harrison County, it is fitting to honor Livingston County Cares for their unwavering compassion for service. Now, therefore, I, Andrew Fofo-Gillich, Mayor of Biloxi, do hereby recognize and commend Livingston County Cares, Inc., for their extraordinary humanitarian efforts, compassion, and enduring commitment to service, and extend a heartfelt gratitude for the positive and lasting impact they have made on our community. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. If someone wants to do a little, if you'd like to say something.
Sure. Well. Yes. Thank you all. It was in 2005, August, that classes were beginning and all watching horror to what was happening off the coast. And we looked at those images and we saw war leads and we looked, where could we go where we maybe develop some, find some opportunities and not make it a one? So that all happened, the fall of 2005 came. Wes Kennison, where's Wes? And we've done every year until about three years ago when COVID happened. And so, which is a campus and community collaborative. The school district, the Chamber of Commerce, the Coalition of Churches, all kinds of organizations in the community pooled our resources and said, let's try to make a difference. So, we started in 2006. Ronnie Rocco, we were here and Rocco was elected president of the board. So we were there and that was, at that meeting, we presented our resolution offering help for 10 years to this area, to Harrison County. And that, at that meeting, Harrison County accepted the, did a reciprocal agreement. So, went 13 years, I think is what we did. Twenty-fifth year to come back here and celebrate and do work. We're actually working on a house on, what? Bellman Fountain. So you see, we're kind of dressed. Thank you all. Gotta turn it on. There we go.
There you go. Now we hear you. Thank you.
So we're here in support of item L, the MAU with Harrison County Development Commission, the City of Biloxi, and the City of Gulfport reinvigorating our sister city agreement with Reenegro Columbia. So they've had a change of mayors and they, we started this before COVID got derailed and now we're putting, putting things back together. The former mayor that Fofo met with is now the governor down there. So we're trying to keep our Colombian friends close so we can do some trade and tourism with them. So we thank you for your support and anything else?
Thank you, Bill. Like I said, our sister city, Reenegro, down there, I think they had 17 council persons, right? It was, it was something out of some of the moves.
Sixty-five, sixty-five political parties, 300 people running for the council for 17 seats. So, it's a little different than Biloxi.
I think there's some opportunities to, we did some, one trip, at least two, one or two trips down there, but we're, I think this is the only positive that we're moving forward. So thank you, Bill, for being here. Thank you for the job that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
And I think that concludes my report.
All right. That'll bring us to the council reports. Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah, we had a nice St. Patrick's Day parade. Well, I had one question to Fofo. How come we had no barricades up for St. Patrick's?
I don't think it was needed, according to the police department.
What do you mean? You had a parade?
Yeah, but I don't think.
You mean the other two parade, we had them all over the place, then buses and everything else?
We, anyway, it was not deemed necessary.
Well, I don't think I'm going to get, one, one person get hurt. It doesn't make a difference. You got 500 at a parade or 2,000, it doesn't matter. You gotta protect the people. And I noticed all the kids was in the street and stuff like that because of the barricades wasn't there. So there, it's not, it is needed.
Yeah, we had the police there and with enough force to, to handle, I think, but then there was no issues from our standpoint, right?
Okay. But I mean, you know, you can't say you're going to have terrorists attack on one with buses, the next one you're not. So I mean, you gotta make your mind, you're gonna put a barricade, put them up all the parades, you know? I want to ask, Harry, Bill, the playground equipment for Miramore, did we get that in yet?
Yeah, I got that second quote.
Ms. Bell, if you would, just come up to the mic so the world can hear you.
I got that quote. Now I'm working on getting somebody out there to remove what's there.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. And, uh, have we had an update? I know Dixie, if I address this also, on the Broadwater. I mean, for some reason, we're the same way for the last three years. Any particular reason we can't get this job done?
Well, there's progress made everywhere. Do you have anything further to report on, I think, the, the cleaning or the status of what they've been trying to do? But as the chief and Chris said, every time they hear about people there, they run them off, but they seem to come back.
We're still pretty close to where we've been at with it. CSX is planning on coming out at the beginning of April to clean that right away that's on the side right there of the property. They're talking about brush hogging and doing stuff with trash. We won't know until that date comes, though. But as far as the rest of the Broadwater property, we're still there. They're waiting on a skid steer to come out and do more of the underbrush area out there, but most of the camps out there are, are run off. Now, we still have some camps along the railroad tracks, it's that CSX portion there. We run them off of there, but unfortunately, some do come back. But we're out there every couple of days and running some, running people off of there. There's a handful of camps, but most, most are out of the area, out of there. That doesn't mean they're not using that as travel, but most of the camps are gone.
Yeah, they seem to be coming back and forth, you know, like they just leave and come back, leave and come back. So we're not, we're not going anywhere. We're not cleaning the land. There's not enough clear cut because if they find bushes, they're gonna sleep under them.
Right. I would like to think that when that CSX portion is cleared and they remove the trash out of there, because there are some tents that are still out there, even though nobody claims them, but periodically, somebody will pop back up into one of them, so.
Because according to LDL, you can't live anywhere in tents in the city of Biloxi. And nobody can give you permission to live on that property in a tent. Can't do that. And we've been fighting this for a long time. And we just move around, shuffle here, there, and we're not, really, to me, this should have been done a long time ago. I don't care who owns the property. You know, we cut, we get them people.
We have no trespasses on everything that we need where identified there. So it's, it's just a labor-intensive, you know, a job that does not go away.
Right. It does not. I mean, the police department, unlike a lot of agencies down here, we actually have officers that are dedicated to this full time. As I'm sure you can understand, we can't be everywhere all at the same time and always catch them when they come back out there. But like I said, we're out there a lot, whether it's on foot, UTVs, we are catching them out there, we are running them off if they're new to the area or making arrests for those that are out there repeatedly. There are trespass letters on that entire property right now, currently.
And just something that's an ongoing thing that we gotta eliminate. We gotta take care of that problem. Another one on the methadone clinic. I noticed I said it last time, we had a meeting, the big thing now, they're lacing all the methadone with fentanyl and they sell them in and out the parking lots and everything like that. Have y'all been updated or paying attention to what's going on with that methadone clinic?
We are aware of it out there. I can't tell you we've made any arrests out there that I know of, sir. So, and although a lot of those things, a lot of those drugs are getting cut with that, what you're getting out of the methadone is traditionally a actual prescription. So most of those should be legitimate prescriptions coming out of there. That doesn't mean that they're not doing something with them when they leave out of there, but that should be a legitimate prescription that's coming out of that, that business.
Yeah, but I mean, you can take the prescription and sell them just like they were doing on the stuff on Walmart. I mean, that don't mean it, that don't mean it's illegal, what they doing. They taking the stuff and moving it outside once you get a prescription. So I mean, just something we need to stay on topic because that's, that's a deadly combination right there. So I mean, y'all need to be aware of that. I don't have to put undercover people in that parking lot. I mean, it's just something you need to stay on top of.
Sir.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Guines.
Yeah, I just want to thank the volunteers. I know they were, they're gone, but I went out, talked to a couple of them, and I recognized a couple of them from years ago when I used to work with Back Bay Mission. Kudos to those guys for coming and helping out mainly in the East Biloxi community. And of course, just for St. Patrick's Day parade, we had a great, wonderful time there, lifting Chief McGilvery up to a victory in the leprechaun race. So thanks again. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Guines, Ms. Newman.
Yes, I got a couple of questions for you. I thought if the tents were left behind and abandoned per se, that we were picking them up.
The police department is not picking up trash. That doesn't mean that the property owner cannot, but we don't have any update on if the property owner is going to come through with equipment to pick theirs up. We know CSX is planning on it for their portion, but as far as the rest of the Broadwater, I don't know. I don't have an answer if they're planning on doing that or not.
Could we have code enforcement pick this stuff up or public works, just like they're picking up the trash on the other side?
Be sure we need to pay attention to before we step across.
And are we going, obviously, they're, you know, leaving during the day and then coming back at night. Are we going out there at night while they're there?
Can't tell you I'm having somebody out there every night, but we are trying to keep an eye on it. So like I said, I've got a handful of officers that are dedicated to it full time, but it's a matter of being in the right place at the right time, like anything else, catching them when they're coming out there. So considering what it used to be down to what it is now, it's, it's a fraction of it. Like I said, I think we got, I think they said five tents maybe along that section there, and most of those appear they haven't been used in a long time. But that's stretching all the way down as far as Bouvoir Road.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, it looks like the citizens are getting together a petition to have a public hearing and they have 150 signatures already. And I would like for us to go ahead and look at doing a public hearing and inviting the owners as well as the homeless coalitions, Back Bay Mission, Open Doors, whoever, so we can get some answers, whoever else can come. And that way, the citizens can, yeah, oh, yeah, I said the owners. That way, we can hear from the owners and get some more insight, have the citizens be able to give some more input and understand what's going on. And, yeah, the citizens are tired.
Yep.
And, and I do, you know, agree with them. If we're gonna do code enforcement on everyone else, you know, we got to make sure that they clean this property up. So is the, what was it, the equipment that they were talking about was broke down? Is it good now or?
I'm not sure. I think Michael has reached out to, to, for and some of the things that we're told before, but I don't think we had a response in the next. But, um, you know, if you, if we come up with a date, you know, we'll, we'll put everything we need to provide the information that needs to be done. It's a solution that maybe that, you know, if we address this problem, we have X amount of resources. We'll put what we can do without endangering other places. And again, I think some of the things we need to be careful of that, we're gonna, without really having a total solution, we're not going to solve anything. We're gonna push it around. But I understand, you know, the intensity and passion that in my neighborhood brings about. So I'm, you know, we're ready to, to at least share what we think we need to do. And I think that's, you know, in a, in a forum where everybody understands and hears each other's position, then I think we'd be better off at least, you know, working with the problem. I don't think there's a, you know, there's not a solution, as I know, you know, around at any place without a tremendous amount of resources and, and which in effect will cause another attraction of those situations. I'm, I'm ready to talk.
And that's why we definitely need the homeless nonprofits as well to attend. And we need help from them as well, you know?
Yep.
To try to solve these problems and have a solution to get these people off the streets as well and not just feed them.
Did, did you want to put that in the form of a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion.
Public hearing? And then we've got, then we've got some publication deadlines to meet. Would that be accurate, Gary? I'm thinking if we had a workshop, it's different than a public hearing, but if you want a public hearing, I think we have some publication requirements. I'm not, I'm not positive we'll look and say.
Can we make a motion for subject to call or something like that or no?
You can make a motion for a public hearing if that's what you want to do. It's just that it may not be scheduled as soon as you'd like. It may be with the publishing deadline. It could be four weeks from now or five weeks from now. Right. All right. So if, if, if you put that in the form of a motion, we'll get a second.
I have a motion for a public hearing for the Broadwater property.
Second. I'm second.
All right.
Should we go ahead and include the methadone clinic too?
Yeah, well, let me tell you.
Let's go ahead and do that so we can get some support from there as well.
Broader than that. The homeless situation and addiction situation, it needs to be discussed because it can't be just that spot because literally, things are gonna be pushed around. I would be more.
I understand. That's why we need to get everyone involved, yes. Okay.
All right. So we want to include the.
Anything related to the homeless.
Methadone clinic as well in that.
Okay. And based on, just see what the public, publish, publishing requirements are, we'd like that scheduled as soon as possible?
Yes.
And I would assume it's, you would probably want it on an afternoon meeting, probably following a 1:30 meeting?
Um, I would say six o'clock meeting. That way, everyone has a chance to come.
Okay. So if we do it at six o'clock, you'd want it following the six o'clock meeting is your preference?
It could be during the meeting, no? Usual?
Well, I guess, I guess we could.
Motion in a second. This is discussion, right?
Right.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah. Okay. So just as soon as possible. If it's a 1:30 meeting, fine. If it's a six o'clock meeting, or if you want it to be, what do we have, April 8th, I think, is our first meeting. So as long as the publishing requirements aren't concerned, we could do it the night of April 8th. Okay? So we're gonna tend to shoot for that. Um, well.
It's up to y'all.
We could, five o'clock?
That's fine.
Okay.
Let me, let me, April 8th, just because I think we're scheduling a trip to be in D.C.
Okay.
I think the following.
We need you here, that's for sure.
But there's some important business we need to address. So I would, April 8th, that 8th is bad for me.
Okay.
I don't mind doing it, you know, the next week, anytime.
What's your preference?
The sooner the better, but I, I think 6:00 P.M. would be best for people to be able to come.
If you.
It is for the people as well, so.
You could schedule it for 6:00 P.M. or whatever day you pick, too.
All right. So what's the first meeting in May? May 6th?
To me, that's too far down the line. We've been dealing with it for three years. Then we would have made it June, the next July.
All right. Then just do it as soon as possible.
Well, let's, you know, I think, let me jump in. My two cents.
Yes.
Because we're not gonna be sitting on our hands between now and then. We hope we'll have some progress with regard to cleanup, with regard to CSX. So I mean, to get the latest and greatest information, and, and again, we hope to, we will report as week by week like we do, meeting by meeting. So I think to get, give us a chance for results and comments on what we think people thought that we would do right or wrong, I think that first meeting in May is cool, but we, you know, we will give you results week by week.
Your preference? If you want a night meeting, I'd go with May 6th, but with a town meeting, does that expedite anything with the?
What do you think, Mayor? You gotta be involved, so.
Well, I just keep, you know, April 8th. I think we're committed that week. You pick it, I'll be involved.
All right. So if we did a town meeting, we could pick a date and time.
Six or whatever.
Yeah? So pick, pick a date and time, finally.
All right. So the second meeting would be April 15th?
Right.
We could do it that evening at 5:00, if you want, or 6:00?
Either one.
All right. So if we shoot for April, what's that, did we say 15th? At 6:00?
April 8th, right? Oh, sorry, 15.
Of course, as Mr. Glavin pointed out, everybody's, you know, dumping their taxes into mailboxes at that time, but, so we'll shoot for April 15th at 6:00 P.M. here in the city council chambers. And the topic will be the Broadwater property and the methadone clinic, and we're calling this a town hall meeting. Is that, all right.
Let me put another two cents. You know, and, and other homeless.
Yes. We want, we want the homeless nonprofits involved, and I want the businesses around the area to be in the loop as well.
I understand it's not just say, oh, just homeless, the homeless across the city. You know, the homeless issues across the city.
Right.
Okay. Do you have all the information you need, Gary? Okay.
All right. Thank y'all very much.
Anything else, Ms. Newman?
I think that's it.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, we.
This was discussion.
Yeah, this was discussion. So we've, we've had a motion by Ms. Newman and a second by Mr. Lawrence, and I think we said we're gonna call this a town hall meeting. So there won't be any publishing requirements. Would that be correct? Okay. All right. So it'll be published on the website and the date is April 15th at 6:00.
Perfect.
All right. So if everybody's good with that, we'll call for the question. All in favor? It's approved on a seven oh vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's all.
Took a while, but we're good to go. All right. Mr. McGilvery.
I'll report.
All right. Mr. Glavin.
Just a few things. A couple of good notes. Mississippi State rolled into town and had a successful two-game stint at, over at Keesler Field, I guess we're calling it, Keesler Park. So that was really good to see that success. And on a downside note, prayers and thoughts go out to the people at Tyler Town. I know we usually organize something with our first responders and our fire department and police departments, but the crew in Neptune is already organizing, mobilizing, and has made contact to go up there. So we, we may be able to pull some resources with those men that are being called to duty. And then in Ward 6, in particular, a couple of small items. They removed the sign at Skeet Hunt Road, but it hasn't been put back yet. So I don't know, the question was, was it a county sign or a city sign? But we were gonna work to put that sign back up at Skeet Hunt, if you, if you recall. Can somebody just follow up on that? Make sure that that doesn't get lost in translation? You got it? Okay. And then another item was a street light replacement at 2034 Bayside Road. If we could follow up on that to see if they, the light was out, they requested if they could replace it with LED lights, which I think that's, can be accommodated, I think. And those are my only two things on my report today.
Thank you, Mr. Glavin. Mr. Schumaker.
I wasn't gonna have any comments today, but I just, sitting here listening, I thought of a couple of things in regarding homeless. The police department, and I know I've said it before, they're kind of our fall guys. Everything, it always falls back on the police, and it's not their problem. They have to deal with it. It's not a problem for the police, but they're dealing with everything when it comes to this. And what we've done, I think, we've allowed the owners, two very wealthy owners of a piece of property in the city that have so much negative on all the surrounding areas and neighborhoods around the Broadwater property. The people that own that were very wealthy, tons of money, equipment, resources. And I think what we've done is we are now and have been providing them with, basically, instead of them providing private security, we're having the police department do the job that quite frankly, in my opinion, maybe they should have hired their own security to do. I mean, the police have to do it because if they don't do it, we have nobody doing it, and it's just gonna run amok. So they're having to deal with it. But maybe, I mean, it's obviously an issue because it comes up every meeting, it's on the news, it's in the paper, it's everywhere. Maybe we should force their hand to clean the property, and what happens after that, we deal with. If the homeless move somewhere else, we deal with it there. But until they clean that property, and they can say a machine broke down, they can say whatever they want. Absolutely, they have the means and the money to clear that and do it. We're not forcing them. As the city at some point, thank goodness, we're having a meeting finally because, and I hope, and I'm sure they're not, but I would hope the owners, you've got two local guys And what happens after that, we deal with. If the homeless move somewhere else, we deal with it there. But until they clean that property and they can say a machine broke down, they can say whatever they want. Absolutely, they have the means and the money to, to clear that and do it. We're not forcing them. As the city at some point, thank goodness, we're having a meeting finally. Because, and I hope, and I'm sure they're not, but I would hope the owners, you've got two local guys here that own all that property would show up. I don't know if they listen to meetings, but it's the topic of every meeting we have here is homeless. And they're going to have to be involved. They may not show up to the meeting, but as a city, at some point, we have to get involved and force their hand to do something. That property's, I mean, look at it. It, it used to be a golf course. Now it's woods. And until they clean it, we're never going to, this problem, we can't go on there and take their tents. We're going to have to get public works and this, that and the other. Is it going to happen? I don't know. But if they clear their property, it wouldn't be an issue. And we're just allowing them to do anything they want. They say they're clearing it. They clear a little bit and then they don't do anything. We've got to force their hand. And I don't know if that, you know, what, what that includes, code enforcement, it includes legal. I don't know. But we've got to make them do something, I, in my opinion. And until we do that, I mean, I don't know that anything's going to change there. They're not going to hire security. So we're going to keep taking the city resources, spending a ton of money to have the police department go out there and run security when, in all honesty, they should be paying for their own security. I mean, if they look around, you got all the neighborhoods and all the neighbors are mad. They ready, they, they want it to be gone and they can't do anything about it. And then here we, the city are just letting them continue on what they've been doing for years and not doing anything about it. That's just what I see. And I think a lot of other people see it. Hopefully this meeting, I digress. I'll, I'll shut up, but hopefully this meeting coming up soon will, will change some things. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. It sounds like, going back to this town hall meeting, is this room going to be big enough for these organizations and the folks who are going to be here? Is this the location where we want to conduct that meeting? We've got the, we've got the Civic Center. Where else do we have? We've. The Gruich Center, if it's not being used, might that be a better forum location? I know somebody would have to check. Gary, if you don't mind, if you would do that and, and we'll just determine, once we see what's available, where the location will be. Okay? All right. I have a couple of things. Just a reminder, I have a Ward 5 meeting next Tuesday at 5:30. That's March 25th at 5:30 at the Donald Snyder Center. Christie, do you know if DNA Underground, Underground would be able to conduct that neighborhood meeting?
Yes. Well, don't be present. I'll, I'll be at the meeting.
Okay. Okey doke. And, and that will immediately follow my ward meeting. That's going to be about seven o'clock. And, and we're going to be talking about the water lines project and the water well project in Bay Vista subdivision. Thank you for doing that, lining that up, Christie. Fence at the north end of Balmarl, has anything been done since I mentioned it last, a number of weeks ago? I was checking two weeks ago and still in disrepair. Are there any plans to replace it or repair it?
Service, service request on their list. Have to look at it.
Okay.
I know, I know they cleared all the vegetation off.
They did. That was done a number of months ago. It's just, this has been going on for three or four years. But anyway, okay. So it's on the list. I'll, I'll check back again in a month. I'd, I'd request an additional street light on Churchill Avenue. It's about where that concrete drainage line runs east and west under Churchill Drive. And we replaced, I guess, a section of waterline there maybe two years ago. But there, there's a, there's a dark spot and it's very close to the park and people walk to that park at night. And I'd sent pictures and requests earlier to the citizens representative, but, but nothing's been done so far. And if somebody was looking for, somebody had asked me about planning commission minutes and development review committee minutes. Are they, I don't think they're posted online. I'd ask that, that we look or consider putting that online or they may be online now and I just don't know where to find them. Mr. Creel, any thoughts if you don't mind?
We do have a court reporter for planning commission. There are minutes and it would not be any problem to put those online if they're not being put on there already. DRC, we don't really have minutes. What we do is, because that plan is subject to so much change from the time that it walks in until the time that it walks out. What we have is comments. We go around the table and each person around the table makes comments about what they need to see on the design. The, the comments, because they change so much from one meeting to the next, might confuse people more than anything else, but we, we just don't have, don't have minutes like a court reporter would provide minutes.
So their comments and couldn't those be posted online? I think if we wanted to post them online, we could post them online. That's just my thought. In the planning commission meetings, you're, you're right in, in thinking about it. Whenever we have planning commission items come before us, rezonings, conditional uses, then we always have a copy of the transcript, basically, which covers the entire meeting. But are there times when the planning commission meets, makes decisions or the board is owning adjustments? Nothing comes to us as a result of that meeting, but still, meeting was conducted and action was taken. That's, that's kept also by the stenographer and a transcript is provided.
Every, every meeting of the planning commission or the zoning board of adjustments, minutes are provided by the court reporter. Yes, sir.
So, so could they be posted somewhere, just like a history and just put it in on, on the city's website? Simply because some, some people are asking me from time to time. It's not an every week occurrence, but I'm thinking there are, there are already transcripts there. Just be to put a link somewhere on the community development page.
And we, and we have them in the packets for the next meeting. It usually takes us about a week, maybe eight days to get those in because the court reporter has to verify that they're correct before she provides them to us. But I, I can't think of any reason why we couldn't put those online.
I think it'd be a good thing to do. I appreciate that. That's all the comments I have at this time.
Could I say something?
Sure, Mr. Lawrence.
I thought about these volunteers that was here and after Katrina, the people that came to City Biloxi and helped us was unbelievable. I mean, it was the old firemen, policemen from different places, the power companies sending all their crews and everything. And to think that we still working on this project, it'd be 20 years, August the 29th of this year. We passed, we got $340 million from FEMA in 2008, 2009, and that's 16 years, 17 years ago, and we still hadn't finished these projects. Some of it's problems, some of them changed orders, but I mean, it's been that long since we've been dealing with this. And a guy told me when we first, he said, it's going to take you 15, 20 years. I said, ain't no way. But we already 15, 17 years in and we still not finished. And we haven't even done West Biloxi yet. It just takes a lot and a lot of money, you know? It's just, I know, Popo, you weren't here. So I'm just saying, that's what this thing, we went from when we first started and the biggest problem we had is FEMA pulled the money. And they had to scope all the pipes and everything. Again, that was in 2010. It had nothing to do with anybody. They just pulled the money. Then we had to re-scope everything. Then we started again. So the process has been tough and long the whole way to make the city of Biloxi better. Go ahead.
I want to comment on this because the, you know, this is a very critical, it's 344 million, probably going to be 444 million before it's over with. It started, it should have been started and almost completed by 2013 and 14. You know, we wasn't mobilized to 2000, you know, the first mobilization money was in 2000. When I got here in 2050, it had 55 miles of street torn up. Now, there's a lot of things. We had to take the bull by the horns. Some of the council meeting were, so I mean, it's a complex deal. It wasn't done like you and I, we've known, we understand more about construction than we ever wanted to know. You know, first move after we got finished with the north contract, which was the most costly and, and most painful that we all experienced. We learned some things and as we roll this thing out the right way, we're finishing 75% before we go to the next. Okay. We got two more phases, about a hundred, maybe 30 million dollars left. Are the most complex project ever attempted in the city of Biloxi. So it's sort of unfair to say it should have been done. Because you don't know the, the details that we deal with every day with FEMA now in, in, in today's business. So I, you know, you press a button with me with regard to this project that has consumed us. And I, I just, I don't want to be, my, my blood pressure's not up there. I'm just telling you, I'm responding to a, a complex situation. That, you know, if, if, let's, let's say one thing, 16 design agents is 11 contractors. What chance do you have that to fit? Okay. 16 different design agents in a project. Now, we got a handful. We redoing a, a couple of what was done in the last two phases. So I, I, again, I'm not being defensive. I'm just, the facts, the facts are the facts and we're doing as fast and the best we can.
That's what I was trying to state to you, the facts. You didn't have to get all upset and get all.
I'm not upset.
I know. You get all bent out of shape. So.
No, the people need to understand.
I didn't say you had to have anything to solve that problem.
Well, we're solving it as, as sort of a design build and that's pretty much it. You know, we, Walt has, has been with us since, since the HNTB ran out of budget and, you know, before 40% of the project was done. We had to put our team together.
Man, they walked, they walked for that 22 million.
Wait, wait. You know, and again, we were 17 million dollars hooked by FEMA when I got on board in 2015. We borrowed 11 million. Now the sort of thing wouldn't stop itself. So, you know, and we, we did what we needed to do. We caught up, we planned and we're doing, we're finishing as best we can. I would challenge anybody to do a better job for what we're doing, what's left now. But I am, you know, if you might say I'm a little defensive, but I'm proud of what we, we've been able to, the solution we've been able to put together and, and finish this project. A complex 30-foot hole in Biloxi, 30-foot, you know, eliminate 75 lift stations. It's pretty, it's pretty juicy.
I didn't say nothing about it being an easy project.
I'm not taking.
So you don't get all bent out of shape.
I'm not bent out of shape. I'm just.
Take, take your medicine and calm down.
I don't need medication.
Come on, come on, gentlemen. In the spirit of, I was going to say St. Patrick's Day, for next St. Patrick's Day, let's make it amicable. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
We're going to have a beer after this, right? So.
Anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, look, he's already cheesed.
Oh, please. Okay.
He okay. Damonson.
That's because. All right. Anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
No, that'd be it.
I was scared to ask.
I ain't saying no more to him. He get all bent out of shape again.
All right. Let's not get excited. I, I will say this. When Walt came on board, maybe he was here a year. And I went and asked him, for a major event like this, how long does it take from the time the event occurs until the last T is crossed and the I dotted? And he said, in talking with the folks in Florida who go through a lot of these, he said, it's going to take anywhere from 20 to 25 years. Now, you can't tell people that upfront or they'll go live somewhere else. Okay? On, on the other hand, I will say, Mayor Gillich, when he came in, we got, got the lookaheads with FEMA through a number of meetings in order to push the money and get things moving. There were a number of contractors at the time who were, who were owed payment from 60, 90, some of them 120, 160 that you inherited. You got things moving. And we moved to our own project manager, so to speak. That saved us a ton of money. There were a lot of things done that most folks didn't sit in on the meetings for, not required to. Everybody's going about their daily life. But I sat in on a few of those meetings and I think the mayor's kept things moving to his credit. And in looking at the project since the north project, set up a structure so that things are pretty much well underway or nearing completion before you start another section. All right. And then there are other challenges. You know, what it costs then, and here we are 20 years later, what do you, what do you think inflation and market supply? And the pandemic and everything has done to the cost of materials and goods and labor. So I mean, Mr. Rhodey, took me a moment to remember your name there, Walt. Mr. Rhodey is doing yeoman's work in dealing with FEMA. I'm telling you, he's one of the best hires in my opinion that we've had in the city. But all that being said, my, my take on it was, I, I think Mr. Lawrence wanted to acknowledge with the passage of time that here, we didn't think we'd be dealing with this for the most part, this long after the event. I don't think he was being critical, Mayor. Go ahead.
In, in that spirit, let me tell you, it's not just fix something that was broke. We're, this will be done for the next 100 years. So the sewer system that we replaced, the things that we replaced, we had all brand new roads, storm drain, everything. This is another 100 year, at least 100 years. The first sewer system was installed in 1957 with a 25-year life. We've been running on borrowed time. So it's, it's not just fixing something where you can use the road. This is, we have a, a system, both, you know, waters, deep water, deep sewer, water, drainage that will be around for 100 years. So we're doing the work that, you know, our, our next generation is not going to have to worry about. So that's worth the pain.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And of course, I got to say something because I bore the brunt of this issue. And so I do have to comment. From awarding, when we, when we awarded the, the funding from FEMA to the time we got started, we're talking about eight years. And that was before any of us got here, most of us got here. So it took a little time to get it started and it was this council that kind of got things started and pretty much forced the contractors to move. And when we forced the contractors to move, we all know what we had to go through. And like I say, I bore the brunt of this a lot. And there's still issues that is not done yet. We're still dealing with more funding. I still have a few more streets that needs to be done now. And of course, I have some that would just love to have a shave and pave just until we get there. And like I said, we started in 2006, 2007 with an award and many of us didn't get here to 2013. So we have to keep all of that in mind, that we started making a move. And, and like, like the mayor said, when we got Walt aboard, we finally started moving things forward. And when we finally got the contractor out of the way, things started moving. So we're moving in the right direction. We just have to stay on point. And with the increase of the costs, we need to petition our government, our legislators to bring us more funding so we can finish the job. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Guns. We'll move on to the public agenda. We'll set aside up to 45 minutes for, for citizens' comments. Each individual will be permitted up to three minutes to speak. If you wish to speak, raise your hand and when I call on you, when you're recognized, if you come up, pull the microphone close so everybody can hear you. Be sure and sign in with your name and address, then state your name so the clerk can record your name accurately. And then you're, we're off to the races for your three minutes. If you exceed three minutes, you'll hear this sound. That's not the bell to come out with your dukes up. That concludes your comments for you. All right. This time, is there anybody on my left? You're right, Mr. Silvestro.
I sit through these council meetings and try and figure out what I'm going to say and it keeps changing. So I don't want it to sound like me. But if you just saw what the mayor said and got upset, imagine if your wife had to go back to her sister's house three times, 800 miles away because of threats. Imagine if you finally get two good neighbors across the street from you to fix up homes that have been empty and they're going to sell them because of the crime. The crime of criminals, prisoners, being dropped off on a property by my home deliberately. And it coming up at these council meetings and the police department saying, yeah, that happened and nobody furthers it. This isn't about getting somebody mad or getting in trouble. I noticed that you're all saying what you're going to do and how you did stuff. But if you do things the same way together, this isn't going to work. You're going to get these charities to come together and they're going to talk about tomorrow, fix my neighborhood. We have people with money in that neighborhood that homes are empty for 25 years behind them. They want to buy them, knock them down, build new house, put rentals in them, help the people. Can't get anywhere. Oh, this one owns it. This one's out of town. Some of my neighbors have come to me and said, isn't it strange? It's almost as if people with money that own property want our neighborhood to fail. So they can develop it. That's speculation. I don't think anybody's saying, but I see the frustration. The greater Biloxi subdivision, people are going to come forward and this isn't going to be railroaded by somebody in the other side of town. I've gone in that woods. I've checked in the areas as much as three days ago. We're also running these homeless people around in circles. They don't know what's going on. The police department is doing a good job, but they're not pulling people out of there with handcuffs. So the, the question is, let's not let this happen again. Let's come together. Let's clear up the woods. And like I said, if you give a code violation to my neighbor and her lawnmower broke, I cut her lawn. So get somebody out there, clean it. And whatever committee you have going forward, I've said it 10 times, I'm not an elected official. I didn't want to run for office. Put me on the committee. Represent the homeowners or you're about to make our homeowners homeless. I'm dead serious. But thank you. Appreciate all your time. We love you, Dixie.
Thank you, Mr. Silvestro. Anybody on my right, your left, wish to address council? All right. We'll go back to my left, your right. Anybody on this side of the room wish to address the council? Again, anybody on this side? Anybody in the back? All right. That concludes citizens' comments portion of the agenda. We'll move to the policy agenda. If the clerk would read item 4A.
Or to amend chapter 2, Article 14 pertaining to municipal facilities.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
By Mr. Glavine. Is there a second? I'll second that for discussion purposes. That's just a first reading, so this is just a procedural matter that we move now to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
The mood.
Was that Mr. Lawrence?
I'll second.
And second by Mr. Gans. Go ahead, Mr. Lawrence.
Can we go on? You got all choked up like Fofo. On Hotel H, what are they actually doing with the shoreline? Improving and changing, also, what do we, what are we actually accomplishing here with the shoreline itself? All right, Krista, that's good.
So, we're gonna put some living shoreline along the shore. It's gonna be some marsh grass. We'll be putting some more sand out there so it'll kind of clean up where that little spit is where the oak tree is. And there's gonna be some, basically like oyster, not oyster cages, we call them like oyster blocks, but concrete blocks of some sort out in the water to kind of break the wave action so that the shoreline can won't erode away. And hope that we can get fish, more fish habitat in there. Those, those like oyster blocks have fish habitat areas and soft shells.
Is this on the backside of the parking lot?
Yes, yes. This is the first phase. We have two phases. This is the first phase, on the backside of that parking lot, where that, where the oak tree is and the little spit that goes out into the water.
And that one I wanted to bring up, the K, and Mike would say kilo, that's the marine talking. Right. This is the best, I think, this is my recommendation, that this should stay the same. We've already cut a bunch of benches off this. And I think the contract, it used to be a four-year contract. We moved it to a year. I think you should move it to two years, 'cause you advertising something, and if people are gonna have time or have the right to do that, you can't do it every year. You know, you need to have at least a two-year. So, I would suggest that we stay the same amount of bench and move it to a two-year contract. So, I make a motion, and we do that.
I'll second it. So, there's a motion by Mr. Lawrence, and a second by Mr. Glavine. To A, leave the list the same. And B, move to, did you say a two-year contract?
Two-year.
All right, so there's a motion and a second and a discussion.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
The five that were mentioned to be taken down, was there a reason for those five?
Three of the five of them were occupied by homeless at the time I counted. So, they, this is part of the homeless situation. We've given them a place to sleep during the day. Now, we could have easily chosen 10, or 15, or 20. But we agreed with the contractor that we would do this in little bites, and not put him out of business in one fell swoop. However, this is part of our homeless solution.
Can I speak?
You have a comment?
Dixie.
I do understand the homeless problem with the benches, but at the same time, I've had comments from the elderly, an elderly lady specifically, and she likes to, she can't drive, so she has issues with getting the CTA car, 'cause you have to make an appointment like three months ahead of time and this and that. And she walks to Walmart and all these places, and she was asking for a bench to be put there. And I was like, "Oh, they're not gonna put one, I'm sure." So, it's a losing, fighting battle type of deal, but we have those benches there for a reason. So, it's, you know, we can't just take them all up. But also, the thing is, is why are we not requiring CTA to put their benches up if we're making this small business do it, you know? So...
Any other comments, Mr. Glavine?
I have a comment. So, I'll predicate this first. The operator of these benches has been doing this for a long, long time, number one. He's good at what he does. And to take pieces of his business away without giving him an opportunity, perhaps, and I've seen these benches where they have deterrence of people trying to sleep on the benches. There's things you could possibly install on the bench that may deter people from using it as a bed versus a seat. That could be one solution. But, and to modify this and bring it down to one year, that's hard on a business, too, to put your business plan together when you're, when you can only tell an advertiser who may want it more long-term and consistent to, they can only give them a one-year contract on these deals. Two years is certainly reasonable. It used to be four. But I think that's a, that's a good compromise in this case. We've all seen the benches. I mean, I grew up as a kid riding around, seeing the benches. And I have yet to recall anything vulgar, or condescending, or that is not in the spirit of the Gulf Coast. I think it provides some information that not only locals, but tourists appreciate. And to remove those markers or those benches would only make it more difficult, perhaps, for some people to find a business. And for a business that's advertising on it, that might mean the additional dollars to pay their staff and to keep their doors open. So, I'd be very cautious with restricting this without maybe finding an alternative solution. Thank you.
All right, I have a, I have a comment, and it's counter to my colleagues up here. This is an advertising business. And when CTA is mentioned, they're in the transportation business. They put benches at their stop, at their stops. And some are, I guess, nicer, have nicer features, they're covered and so forth. But this is an advertising business. They're, these benches, as near as I can tell, are placed where they're placed for advertising purposes. And it's a non-exclusive agreement, so I would assume if somebody else wanted to do business with the city and made the city a decent offer, then that might be permitted. I don't know. But I'll, I'll say that at several intersections over the years, I've asked, and this council has approved, removing some benches from those intersections. And there's still a couple of intersections where I would prefer to see some of these benches removed. CTA does not stop there. The homeless are there. Panhandlers are there. They may not be homeless, just folks begging there. I get calls about that, I'm sure from time to time, my colleagues may get calls about that. So, that, that being said, it's not out of the question, in my line of thinking, that we don't even need to have such an agreement. Again, this is for advertising purposes. But that's my personal feeling. We'll do whatever this council wants to do. Because in the motion that we're considering now and discussing, there was, part of the motion was to leave the list, list the same. There is one particular bench I would like to see removed. And that's bench number 20 at Pass Road in De Bees. That's the old, they have it listed as the old middle school. That's the Fairwood School site. The bench is on the west side of De Bees, which is on the school district property or the city's right-of-way. And the folks who are there at that bench generally walk on the sidewalk on Pass Road west of De Bees, which is not in the Biloxi Police Department's jurisdiction. And I don't know that City of Gulfport cares much about that or not. But I hear calls, I get calls about that. There are shopping carts parked there at times, full of junk or trash. Other times, there's nothing there but junk and trash. Having, having said that, if, if nothing else, I would like that particular bench removed. That's bus number, excuse me, bench number 20, Pass Road in De Bees, Old Middle School. Mr. Crew Thursday, I'm gonna put your parliamentary experience into, into, into action here. Would I move to amend the amendment offered by Councilman Glavine?
I have a question.
Let me answer, let me get, I can only think of so many things at one time. I think.
George made the motion.
Sure. Go ahead, Mr.
George made the motion.
No, I know George made the motion. My question is.
That's George Lawrence.
Yeah, okay. So, my question is, with an amendment on the floor, I'd like to amend that amendment.
We'd take each motion, one at a time. So, we'd take the First Amendment, and then we'd take your.
Okay. So, that's, okay, that makes sense to me. All right, so we have, is there any more discussion, first of all?
Could we not charge the business owner themselves to make sure these benches are, you know, not preoccupied wrongly with the homeless and left with trash and all these other things? Besides, you know, we can look at removing it later, but let's give them a chance, perhaps?
Basically, I did talk with the representative of the company, and the response, I said the homeless is an issue. That's my concern.
Correct.
And the response was, "That's not my problem. That's, you know, that's the city's problem. I'm not responsible for the homeless."
Well, it is their problem because it is their business. So, if we threaten to take it away, we need to charge them with it, right? And if they don't comply, then we can look at removing it again. That's just my two cents. Thank you.
Any other comments, Mr. Lawrence?
As amended, I would say we keep it the same and add it, make a two-year contract. If CTA is letting them sleep on the benches, then we need to cite CTA. And more people sleep on them benches than CTA, than anywhere in the city of Biloxi. Anytime you pass that night, they got all their bags and bikes, and they got all that tied up. So, if you wanna cite somebody, you need to go cite CTA. I don't care what benches they're in. You can't promote something that's not right for the city of Biloxi, let anybody sleep. And so, you can't use a bus stop, 'cause they got them sleeping all over, with their bags and their bike. I mean, I watch it all the time. Everybody, y'all all see it. So, you wanna do something with CTA, cite them.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, we'll call for the question to amend the resolution to the agreement regarding bench advertising with coast bench advertising. All in favor of the amendment? All opposed? George, it's a 1-6, it's a 6-1 approval.
How about that one?
I know. You hadn't, you hadn't told, you hadn't congratulated me on that in about 10 years.
I'm not like Fofo. I'm happy. I'm not getting all upset.
All right, so, that was, that was a vote on the amendment. That was a vote on the amendment. Now, what we'll do is, I think we have to vote on the amended agreement. So, correct?
Right.
I would say, pick the one that you wanna remove, five that you just approved.
We approved all of them.
You approved all of them. Pick the one that you wanna remove.
Yeah, just, all right, so, all right, now we can handle the next amendment?
Yes, that's right.
All right. So, I would offer, I would offer an amendment that we remove bench number 20, Pass Road in De Bees, Old Middle School, from the amended agreement. Is there a second? All right, fails for a lack of.
I'll second that.
There's a, so there's a motion by Tisdale. There's a second by Shoemaker.
Discussion.
Yeah, discussion. I gotta make my notes. Thank you. All right, any discussion? Mr. Glavine, you got a comment?
You made the motion.
Yeah, I made the motion. I've already discussed the matter. It's.
No, I'll just say, I agree with, I mean, he's a small business, and like I voted in the last vote just now on the other amendment. However, if the bench at De Bees Road is that much of an issue, especially for a homeless issue, and it's causing you that much of a problem, then I don't have a, well, then I support removing that bench. But I would definitely say keep the rest of them and stick with the two-year amendment and lease or rental agreement, however, we're doing that for two years. But I do support just taking the, and removing the one bench at De Bees.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Is there any, any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to, in all due respect, and I know we deal with a variety of issues, and I'm not disputing any of the facts that are, have been offered today. But I think the advertiser, perhaps, if he's listening or watching what is transpiring today, will focus on, give that bench that Mr. Tisdale has singled out, and perhaps focus on it. And if it is an issue, maybe he can self-resolve that. Again, maybe there's some deterrence he can add to that bench that perhaps can fix the problem or deter the problem. But I'm just not all in on just removing a bench at this time unless there's some repetitive issues that continue to come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Any other comments? All right, there being none, all in favor of this last amendment offered, signal their approval. All opposed? Fails on a 2-5 vote. Did you get the council votes on that, Karen? Okay. All right, Mr. Lawrence?
One last thing on November N. Is it, what is left to be done at the ball fields?
Nothing. All the work's complete now. We just didn't wanna put this on here. We were holding it for them to finish up their punch list items. So, it's, it's complete. If there's anything that comes up, it'll be a warranty item, but it's, it's done.
Okay, so everything's really done?
Yes.
It's just a final payment?
Right, correct.
Thank you. That's it.
All right, Mr. Gans, anything?
None.
Ms. Newman, anything? Mr. McGilvery?
I have none.
Mr. Glavine?
Just a comment on Director's comments about everything is finished, and I believe she is accurate. Everything's finished according to the contract and the scope of work. However, that complex out there still has some needs. And I don't want to just say we, we did this project, and it's all done, and there's nothing else to do to maintain it and keep it at a level. I think we have a major tournament coming up this weekend. And the word of mouth on their, their experience on this weekend and future tournaments are gonna determine future success, and if it's gonna attract these big tournaments that we all want to see. So, there are still nuances, and even more than nuances out there that, that need to be taken care of. And I just, just wanna make sure we don't lose sight of that. And it, we don't want it to be subpar. We want it to be excellent, you know? And that's our image, and that's what Biloxi should be. I just thought I, I needed to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Mr. Shoemaker, anything? I have a question on item O. This deals with the rental agreements, and the, these are the costs, or the fees that will be charged to use the different. Facilities. I just wanna be sure I understand. So, if I have a child on a 10-year-old city youth baseball team, and if I'm a coach, and we're gonna practice out on one of the fields at the Holloway Sports Complex, I'm gonna have to call and schedule the time to practice on that field. And depending on whether I use the lights or not, it's gonna cost me $30 for that practice or $45 for that practice? Thank you, Ms. Bell. Would that be accurate?
No, we will not charge anybody that is in the league. What we're trying to do is make people accountable for the use of our parks and the way that they've been, I hate to say, tearing them up. Look at Pops Ferry. Now Eagle Point is taking a beating because of the people out there. No, we're, these are just people from the outside that are coming, wanting to rent our fields, practice, use the light, demand that the bathrooms be open, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, be sure I understand. I'm thinking so, whether it's a game field or a practice field like Zafaro or Miguez, as long as. field like Severo or Megas, as long as we're, we're all coaches for the city league, we can use those at no charge, we just schedule them?
Yes, we've done that before, we know they're gonna play.
May I follow up also?
Sure.
I've been very involved with league sports and all that stuff. Is it still in place that league sports has a practice schedule for each of the teams?
Yes.
That they have a, so they have fields that are already pre-reserved because the sea, the season games are set, but also the practice schedule is set for the league teams in all age groups, correct? Is it still?
Yes, sir.
All right, so that's still in place, so if they want an additional practice outside the regular league-approved practices, is that free of charge on a first-come, first-served basis?
Yes, we told them that Todd Megas and Severo were available if they needed to do extra practice.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure nothing changed there. Thank you.
Right, thank you, and I appreciate the clarification, so, yeah, if we're playing the youth league here in the city, there's no charge.
I'd like to say something. Do we not charge these kids to play?
No, we.
We had, we charged them to play, now we're gonna charge them to practice? Could they play in the city of Biloxi?
No.
Where we going to?
No, we're not charging them. We're not charging.
If they, he said outside, if you use something different outside what you can practice on, you gotta pay for it.
Not in the city league.
If you're, if you're, if you're, if you're playing in a city league, there's no charge, but if you're playing in another league and wanna use the city facilities, then these charges apply.
I'll give you an example, so if we, my grandson plays on a travel team, and we practice out at the Gulfport Sportsplex, and they charge us to use those fields, and we usually pay pretty dearly to make sure that the travel teams are having practices. That's not a league team, that's a travel team. So I'm assuming this works similar, if a travel team wants to use our facilities, they'll have to pay these rates, or an outside league team wants to use our facilities that is not league-affiliated, they have to pay these rates. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
Okay, anything different?
No, we're very competitive, I know that.
Okay, no, I just wanna make sure from a league, and Mr. Lawrence makes a valid point here, we don't wanna charge our kids playing league ball to practice, so.
Yep. Now, if they're in the league, no, we're not, because we know they're gonna wanna practice elsewhere, not just on that one day that they're scheduled.
Yep, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. All right.
Here's your question, Kenny, traveling team, you got thirteen people on it, and nine of them from Biloxi, you gonna charge them anyway? Most of them played in the leagues.
On the travel team, yes, sir.
They came through the leagues, right. So I mean, that's, I mean, this is not right to me. But you don't want, you don't want people involved? I mean, there's so many things, you know, you're gonna just eliminate, like you practicing in Gulfport.
We practice in Gulfport, we practice in Goshay, we practice wherever we get a field.
Team's not from Gulfport. Anyway, okay, good enough.
Okey-dokey. Let's see, that's my last question, mercifully. That being said, we'll call for the question on the consent agenda. All in favor of the consent agenda as presented and amended based on those particular items? It's approved on a seven-o vote. Thank you. Now, if there are any exceptions, Mr. Lawrence?
Yes. Oh, Oscar.
Oscar. So Mr. Lawrence is in no on Oscar, okay? Mr. Guines?
None.
Ms. Newman? Mr. McGilvery?
None.
Mr. Glavine?
I have none.
Mr. Shoemaker? And I have none. Thank you. That brings us, there's no code enforcement hearings. Jerry, if you wanna leave early, you can get a head start. Thank you. All right, that brings us to the routine agenda. Is there a motion?
Yes.
There you go. By Mr. Lawrence, is there a second? Thank you. By Mr. Guines. All right, Mr. Lawrence.
Don't come in with, I'm waiting for it to come online and all that. Give me, give us some money.
Well, like, I spoke to the council last Tuesday, you know, we received our 1.054 million from MEMA, thanks to Mr. Leonard for contacting the head of MEMA, and we were able to get that quite quickly. We do have that 1.242 million still sitting in there in the, what we call step three of five, that's the GAR approval, Governor Authorized Representative. Because of the tornado, a lot of the MEMA people are going through the counties and areas that were hit by the tornado and checking on damages, so it's kinda all hands on deck for the MEMA personnel, but I'm sure between either myself or the chief admin officer, we will be asking MEMA to quickly get that next 1.242 million into step four, and that's when it starts coming our way, right after that.
Well, that's, that's a good thing y'all keep up, but I give, you know, you don't wanna get them all bent out of shape again.
Yeah, yes, sir.
But actually, since he's been doing this, y'all set this program up, y'all pretty much stay on top of the money, and we never really behind before. Like you said, we were way behind, and, you know, before fifteen, 'cause we had no contact with anybody. We was out nine, ten minutes, that's why we had to borrow eleven me to pay the bills. So no, y'all have done a good, don't have to get upset.
I'm not upset, I'm looking at accurate information.
I'm actually, I'm trying to praise you a little bit.
Excuse me, excuse me. Carrie, would you hit the bell, please, to end this round? Thank you.
That's all I was saying. The last several years have been great. Good.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from council on the routine agenda? There being none, all in favor of the routine agenda as presented, it's approved on a seven-o vote by the clerk, is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
By Mr. Lawrence, by Mr. Guines, all in favor, seven-o vote. We will adjourn for about seven to ten minutes, and then we'll, then we'll call to order our special meeting on the Parks and Recreation Commission. Thank you.
No. Thank you. Thank you.